All in the order, please stand for the pledge.
Mr. Mayor, if you could indulge me of the board, if you don't mind, I asked Mr. Trosel to come in to discuss some things, so if we can kind of interrupt and kind of get him first, so he doesn't have to be here for an extended period of time.
Oh, okay.
If that's all right.
All right, Craig, up here, I guess.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I'll make this quick, first of all, I'd like to say I thank you for this last minute, so I appreciate you giving up your personal time at the last minute to come out. But, you know, I gotta tell you, you know, kind of being the young one on the board, there's a lot of things I've just, you know, been kind of holding my tongue with, but anyway, the bottom line is, after a lot of consideration and, you know, after a lot of thought, there's just one thing I need to say to you, and that's thank you for putting in 30 years of hard, dedicated work in a job that a lot of people say is thankless, so I want to say thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you very much, and I appreciate the mayor and the commissioners giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens of the town of Elton.
Okay, then, if you all come downtown.
You know why you're here?
You know why you're here?
We had to get you out of here some kind of way.
I did not know, five minutes of work.
Certainly do. Okay, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton to J. Craig Trosel, Jr., being known on behalf of the mayor and commissioners along with the citizens of the Elton community and in recognition of his outstanding commitment to pay for the public service as the director of Department of Plant Building and Zoning and the many intervening roles he has played since his first join the Elton Public Service Team on January 20, 1983, we hereby formally extend our deepest appreciation to this extraordinary individual, along with a certificate of special recognition of 30 years of public service given on our hands and seal this 20th day of February 2013, Joseph Alphasona, Mayor, Commissioner Hicks, Commissioner Piner, Commissioner Mary Jo, Balassi, and Commissioner Gibbons. Congratulations on your job at Elton.
Did you want to go over your notes?
We'll wait until you say it.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Craig.
Get a motion except the minutes of February 6th, if there are any additional corrections to minutes?
Some of them.
Okay, third second, all those in favor? Get a motion except the financial report and payment of the bills.
Some of them.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
No amendments, Steve?
No, not at the time.
Severin Trent, Ken? Feeling a little better now, right?
Yeah.
And this weather has getting our by down.
It's kind of working down, yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
How you doing, sir?
Just give you a brief update on the water and wastewater treatment facilities for the month of December and somewhat January. I just want to start out going over some numbers, because it's the end of the year, the 2012 is over, and we have the annual numbers in this report, so I wanted to talk about that. But, for, in the month of January, the, you know, with the average discharge BOD was 2.0 for the wastewater treatment plant, which is excellent, and the TSS was 2.6 milligrams per liter, average. But, the main number I wanted to show the mayor and council was the total nitrogen for the year was, the allowable discharge amount is 37,156 pounds per year, and the treatment plant discharged 858 pounds in 2012, which is a fraction of the maximum allowed from that, so it's pretty, pretty good. And then the total phosphorus discharge, allowable discharge amount is 2,787 pounds, and the treatment plant discharged 248 pounds for the year. So, I'm real pleased with those numbers.
It should be.
Couple highlights, we were able to get the sprocket installed on the dryer, and I talked with you several months ago about replacing it, and it's been done, so we're back up and running now, full speed. Also, we, this last month in January and February, we completed a lot of the sludge, yearly sludge bio solids reports, we did the sludge utilization report for the town, and also the sludge generator, and also we have an EPA bio solids discharge monitoring report that goes out yearly, and that's all, that's been completed. Another highlight is that, I know we discussed it last time I was here, was that, you know, the water treatment facility, it's got new VFDs installed on the finished water pumps, and the new pumps have been installed, and along with the motors and the training, we as, well, my staff and myself received training on the operation of the VFDs and pumps, and they're beautiful, they've done a great job, and they're going to be, and they're very energy efficient, and they're going to save the town a lot of money in the future. One of the things that we did was, we programmed the variable frequency drives on these pumps to what they call soft start and soft stop, and that's pretty important, so when we turn the pump on, instead of it coming up to speed immediately and shock the system, it'll slowly ramp up the speed, and when it shuts off, it'll slowly slow down. So, what it does is, it eliminates what they call water hammer in the system, and very, a lot of times, what happens is, when you get water hammer developing in the system, you'll develop water main breaks. So, we have these new VFDs on these pumps, so we're, and you're able to program how they come on and how they stop, and it's a, it's a good thing, so it should minimize water main breaks or water line breaks, because I know last summer we had severe water main break around Main Street, which is a direct feed from the water plant, so that, this is going to, this is going to help, help a lot, and I wanted to let you know that. That's really all I have.
What about, we've been having this problem with Singerly Fire Company, have we got that problem fixed? I see you had something here.
Well, that's interesting, I'd like, I'd like to speak to that. As you know, several, two months ago, maybe, we put, myself and DPW, we came out, we did, we looked for some valves in the system, and we, and what we did was, we put Singerly Fire Company on the Walnut Hill Zone, Pressure Zone, and I wanted to, at that time, I even talked to the mayor and council, the mayor wasn't there that evening, but I did speak to the council about extending that zone to include the Elton Middle School and the Elementary School, and that didn't happen. But, what happened after that is, DPW realized that when we put Singerly Fire Company on the Pressure Zone, although it improved the pressure and flow at the firehouse, it doubled the pressure, and it doubled the fire flow. For instance, before we put Singerly Fire Company on the Walnut Hill Tower, the fire flow at the firehouse was less than 500 gallons a minute at the hydrant right in front of the firehouse, and the pressure was like 40. So, when we put the fire company on Walnut Hill Tower, it increased the fire flow to almost 1,000 gallons a minute, and it took the pressure up to 70 PSI, pounds per square inch, which was, in my mind, a good thing, and, because I know the fire protection is paramount everywhere, you know, for the town, and having adequate pressure and fire flow is, it's what it's all about. So, you know, in my mind, I wanted to, I would like to have seen that extended to the middle school and to the elementary school, that didn't quite happen. So, anyway, the town actually put the firehouse back on the water plant zone. So, you're, right now, you're back at 500 gallons a minute and 40 PSI.
How much?
40 PSI.
They got me the other day.
Actually, it's lower than that.
No, because they got me the other day, and they told me it was only like, some days it's 50, and sometimes it's 30.
Yes.
I want to know why there's such a range, and I can't fill the anchors with 30 PSI.
I understand that.
I've heard that also, I'm glad you brought that up.
I'd like to explain that to you, and what we've done is, we have a pressure recorder, we have two of them, and it's a pretty neat thing, and what we're able to do is, we can put these pressure recorders anywhere in the town, and they will record the pressure on the system, like every five minutes, every 10 minutes, every hour, whatever we want, and it'll do it for as long as we want. And so, we've been putting these pressure recorders throughout the town now, we haven't, we haven't had a chance to do the whole town, but what we've been able to see is, is pretty, we've been getting some great information, and one of the reasons we did this was, not only because of the firehouse lacked pressure, but also, we've been getting complaints on Route 40 at the motel there, at the Lux Motel, and so the town, DPW contacted us, and they said, "Well, what do you recommend doing?" Well, you know, I didn't want to say anything, I wanted to get some data, I wanted to see, well, what is the pressure there? And so, we've been able to get pressure readings at the hotel, and we find that the pressure there is very similar to the pressure at the firehouse, and I'll give you an idea, that when the water plant is operating, and when the water plant comes on in the morning, we start around 6:00 a.m., and when the water plant comes on, at that point, it's starting to fill Blue Ball Tower, and it takes a while, it takes all day for that to happen, and when Blue Ball Tower gets full, and then the water plant's still running, it, the system hits its maximum pressure, and it's about the 75 PSI, sometimes it gets a little bit higher than that. So, when Blue Ball's full and your reservoir is full, the water plant shuts down, and then, of course, the Blue Ball Tower and the reservoir supply, supplies the town with their water throughout the night. So, once the water plant shuts down, the pressure at the firehouse and the pressure that at the hotel on Route 40, which is supplied from Blue Ball Tower, pressure from Blue Ball Tower drops to, it continually drops to 40, then to 30, and sometimes it drops below 30, it got down, I saw some results where it was like 28 PSI. Now, there's a couple reasons for that. One reason is, is that Blue Ball Tower supplied the town with their pressure, okay, because, and the reservoir, that's where the town got initially, and then as the town grew and expanded, more and more area was added on to Blue Ball Tower. So, now, Blue Ball Tower supplies water to most of the town, it's unbelievable. I was shocked when I realized, when I found out the area that Blue Ball Tower supplies, it, so it supplies water to, all the way to the firehouse, that, I mean, that section in there, it used to supply water to, you know, the high school, but the high school gets their water supply now from Walnut Tower. Because of the lack of pressure, they went into the upgrade at the high school, they went ahead and ran a new service from the back of their building and connected to Walnut Tower, so they're out of that, they're out of the Blue Ball Zone now, they're in the Walnut Hill Zone, but they're much better off. So, Blue Ball Tower also supplies water all the way down to Route 40, up Route 40, to Whitehall Road, across Route 40, down Whitehall Road, across 213, down to Buttonwood, and then all that development down in there. So, that, and then, of course, it also supplies water to Hollinsworth area, Water Plant, Waste Water Plant, and that area. So, as the town has grown, the area for Blue Ball Tower has increased. And, the, and this gets a little bit complicated, but at the bottom of Blue Ball Tower, you have what they call an altitude valve, and it's called a double-acting altitude valve, and it's a mechanical device, and what it does is, when the tower, when Blue Ball Tower gets full, it closes and allows the water plant to then fill up the reservoir, because the reservoir is a higher elevation than Blue Ball Tower, not by much, about five feet, eight, seven feet higher. So, when Blue Ball fills first, that valve, that altitude valve closes, and then, and the water plant then finishes filling up the reservoir. When the water plant shuts down, and the pressure in the system starts to drop, this altitude valve starts to open up, and then it opens up, and then water comes out of Blue Ball Tower and supplies the town with water. And there has been, there has been times since I've been here where I've seen this altitude valve stick, and, you know, we've done a lot of work on this altitude valve to make it function perfectly all the time. Now, it's been working very good for the last, I don't know, four or five months, but back in the spring, it failed, and when it failed, it didn't open. So, here we are, we have a tower that's got 500,000 gallons in it, and we have a valve at the bottom of it that's automatic, is supposed to mechanically open as soon as the pressure in the main drops, it did not open, and no one knew what had happened, because there's really no way for anyone to know if this valve fails, that it's failed. And what happened was, back at the water plant, we saw a dip in the pressure, and we thought, DPW thought, and I thought at the time that someone was taking water from us, that there was, you know, like a swimming pool tank, or someone's going behind Walmart and hooking up to a hydrant and open up a hydrant, because when you open up a hydrant, you get that kind of dip. But, the reality was, that's not what was happening at all, this altitude valve failed. And that kind of bothers me, because that, see, that's the first time I've ever, this is the first time I've ever seen a double-acting altitude valve, you know, I've seen a lot of water towers, and they don't usually do that, it's a very unique situation, but anyway, that's the way it is. But here, the other problem is, is you've got water coming from the reservoir. Now, the level, the altitude level of the reservoir is higher than Blue Ball, but the problem is, is that the water mains that are going up to the reservoir, you have two eight, two eight-inch water mains, and they've been in the ground probably for 60, 70 years, and they're, and they are made of cast iron. Cast iron's a wonderful thing, it's one of the strongest materials in the myth that man can use for water mains, okay? But, the problem is with it, is that after a time, it gets, it starts developing this corrosion inside the pipe, and it needs to be cleaned out. So, when we had that water main break last summer on Main Street, we got the city inside of the pipe and inspected it, and it had a lot of, they look like, they call them tuberculation, but it's, they call them tubercles, but it's like stalactites hanging from the inside of the pipe. So, when you, so it prevents water from moving freely inside the pipe, it creates a lot of friction loss, is what they call it. So, you have all this water sitting up on the top of the hill, and you can't get it in the town. And when we, and when we did the, when we worked with KCI, and that, when we first, when we realized, back when we had, back at the Fourth of July, and we lost Well 3, and we supplied water from Holly Hall, because, and it pumped down the reservoir, and we realized that the pumps at the water plant were only designed at half their capacity. Well, we did a study, the town did a study, they got KCI here, and we worked with them many nights, we came out, and we did pressure readings of the system, and we realized then, and also, when we painted Thompson Tower, we had to do pressure readings at nighttime to make sure that when Thompson Tower was taken offline, we could supply the rest of the town with pressure. And what we found out was that this transmission line going from the town to the reservoir was in bad condition, that the thought was, when you, when you connected Ortesian to the reservoir, that all that water would come down the hill and supply the town. Well, if something were to happen to a Blue Ball Tower, you'd have problems getting water downtown from the reservoir because of the condition of these lines. Not only that, if you were to have a major water main break with one of these transmission lines going up to the reservoir, and you had to isolate one of them for repairs, and if for some reason you couldn't get to it, because I understand you got one of the water main lines goes through swamp areas, and it's hard to get at, if you were to lose that line, I don't think you could get enough water to the reservoir to supply Washington Woods and 279 area. I don't, it would be, we would struggle getting water from the water plant to those areas in town. So, in my mind, the town needs to clean the lines, there's no doubt, you need to clean the lines, and...
You haven't cleaned the lines out yet?
Yeah, I mean, I know you brought to our attention a while ago.
No, it's going to cost you about, you know, it's going to cost some money, you know, we've gotten, I know you...
What's the money?
Well, okay, I contacted some companies to do this, and I contacted this company in Canada, and it worked out to, actually, cleaning the line from here out of town's not so bad, because there's no, there's no connections on it, there's, you know, it's just a straight line, because every time you have a service connection, the price goes up. But, the fact that there's very few service connections on the line going up to the reservoir, it's not so bad. And I believe it was about 50,000 to do the line, I think, I don't remember.
You did the one line?
I think it was total.
Total?
Yeah.
Okay, now, is that in conjunction with coming up with a plan for the double-acting altitude valve?
So, we can get pressure at these two places you were just talking about?
Okay, so let me finish that part of the story. Now, when the town went back, put the Singerly Fire Company back on Blue Ball Tower, so we've got these pressure recorders now at the firehouse, and we have them down at the hotel, we have them, we have them on your street, and, and like, so what we found out, the pressure at your house, Commissioner, is that you have almost 90 PSI at your house, but the street behind your house has 30 PSI. And you say, "Well, how is that possible?" Well, there's a problem there. So, what happens is, Commissioner Piner, the street, Whitehall Road, is getting his water from Thompson Tower, okay? And the difference is, so his pressure is 85, 90 PSI, and the people that are down on Route 40, the hotel, they're getting their water from Blue Ball Tower, and their pressure's 30.
Well, what about the street behind Commissioner Piner?
What about my street? I'm in Thompson Estates, I don't get that much pressure.
Close to the tower here.
You should be getting about 60 PSI there, okay? That, we have Well 3, Well Number 3 supplies water to Thompson Tower, and I have, at Well 3, I have 60 PSI, 55, 60 PSI, which is excellent pressure, okay? That's good pressure. Now, there are areas up in Thompson Tower, close to the tower, where the pressure starts going down, especially if you get near Graymount Avenue. If you get, if you're on Graymount Avenue, and you're at, below the, there's a division valve there, a pressure sustaining valve, if you're downgrading of that pressure sustaining valve, the pressure's very low.
Yeah, on the hill, it's towers down.
So, so here's the thing, is the town of Elton has five different pressure zones, okay? Now, when these pressure zones were created, I'm not so sure that there was always a lot of thought given to what effect that would have on pressure in each zone, you know what I mean? So, you've got the pressure zone that the water plant's on, and you got the Walnut Tower Pressure Zone, and then you've got 279 Pressure Zone, you've got Washington Woods Pressure Zone, and then you have Holly Hall Pressure Zone, so you have these, you have five different pressure zones in the town.
Well, of course, back then, you didn't have this, you didn't know where the growth was going to take place.
Exactly.
Where the growth would take place, it's...
That's exactly right, and that's what happens, and that's why, when I said to you that initially, Blue Ball Tower probably did fine, because the area that it served was a lot smaller then, way back then, but now, in the last 20 years, you know, because you've been here, I'm not, but I know, I can see that historically, now, your last 20 years, you've expanded, and you keep expanding this zone from Blue Ball Tower. So, what I wanted to do was, I wanted to put the firehouse on Walnut Tower, just like the high school is, and give them the fire flow. But, when, when we did that, one of the reasons, see, they, and I told you, they ran a new eight-inch water line up Bridge Street, they added one, because they knew that, what they wanted to do, because fire pressure's always been a problem, so they ran an eight-inch line up Bridge Street on the one side, they got six inches on the other side, and eight on the other side, and then they took this eight-inch, and they connected Worthy Park, and they came down Elton Newark Road, and tied in the fire company, and they also looped it down to North Street, because there was a time when it was not looped, and the only supply, fire supply years ago was from the Blue Ball Tower coming in from North Street up this way, and, and I, because I have blueprints showing that there was a time that the town was going to run another line, another eight-inch line to up North Street from, that would have been coming from the reservoir, to boost the fire protection at the middle school. But, in and of, they never did that, it was proposed. What they ended up doing was running this eight-inch line down Elton Newark Road to the fire, to Singerly Firehouse, keep going down, to the high school, and tie it in to North Street. So, when we put the firehouse on Walnut Tower, we had to isolate, we had to close the valve right past the firehouse, and what that did was, even, it didn't change the pressure at the, at the school, but if you went and opened up a hydrant at, say, the middle school, it cut the flow off at the Gilpin Elementary School. But, we didn't get to finish what I wanted to finish, because I talked to the mayor council, and what I wanted to do was provide the fire protection from Walnut Tower to Gilpin Manor and to the middle school, because right now, the Gilpin Manor and the middle school's back on the Blue Ball Tower, and you could go up there right now and do a flow test on the hydrant, and it's less than 500 gallons a minute, and the pressure is the same as it is at the Singerly Firehouse, it's terrible. So, we didn't, we have not really accomplished anything. Now, here's the problem, we sat, we sat in a meeting, and it was sort of decided in the meeting that the town would go ahead and reinstall another pressure sustaining valve on the six-inch line that goes up Bridge Street, up 213... have been coming from the reservoir to boost the fire protection at the middle school. But in and of, they never did that, it was proposed. What they ended up doing was running this eight-inch line down Elton North Road to the fire, to Sengly Firehouse, keep on going down to the, uh, high school and, and tied in the North Street. So when we put the firehouse on Walnut Tower, we had to isolate, we had to close the valve right past the firehouse. And what that did was even, uh, it didn't change the pressure at the fi, at the school, but if you went and opened up a hydrant, uh, at say, uh, the, the middle school, it cut the flow off at the Gilpin Elementary School. But we didn't get to finish what I wanted to finish because I talked to the mayor council and when, what I wanted to do was provide the fire protection from Walnut Tower to Gilpin Manor and to the middle school. Because right now, you're, the Gilpin Manor and the, and the middle school's back on the, uh, Blue Ball Tower and you could go up there right now and, and do a flow test on the hydrant and it's less than five hundred gallon a minute and the pressure is the same as it is at the Sengly Firehouse, it's terrible. So we didn't, we have not really accomplished anything. Now, here's the problem, we sat, we sat in a meeting and it, it was sort of decided in the meeting that the town would go ahead and, uh, reinstall another, uh, pressure sustaining valve on the six-inch line that goes up Bridge Street, up two thirteen to, to Walnut Tower. And so that's what the town's gonna do now. I, I don't think it's gonna work. And the reason I don't think it's gonna work is because it's on a six-inch line and the six-inch line that it's on flows, comes all the way down and connects into the water main on Blue Ball Road. And then by the time it, it, so the, the other problem is, is that, I, I told you the story before too, that, uh, that, uh, that, um, how do I explain this again? Walnut Booster Station, it gets its water, it takes its water out of Blue Ball Tower and pumps it up to Walnut Tower. So when I came to you with the, when I came with the town, we realized that this pumping station was running all the time. And I said to Steve, I said, why does pump station run all the time? He says, well, because the town put in this pressure sustaining valve on the water main on two thirteen and it's supplying, it's supplying water back into the town. I said, well, we can, we never get Walnut Tower, Tower full, we can't do that. So we, we looked into that and what we found out was that there was a valve open on two thirteen on the eight-inch line. And so the Walnut Pumping Station was pumping seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon a day to Walnut Tower and it was coming back in a circle and it was pumping it in a circle. And the pumps were running twenty-four hours a day at this pumping station. Now, when we closed that valve, the pump shut off immediately. So now the pumps run four hours a day compared to twenty-four. Now, we're getting, the town is getting ready to put in this, uh, uh, pressure relief valve and it's gonna do the same thing as opening that valve. And it's gonna take water out of Walnut Tower, take it down to Blue Ball Road and it's going, and, and this line feeds water all the way down to Button, Buttonwood, goes, you know, that, that, and it's going, and Walnut Tower's gonna run all the time. So instead of running four hours a day, the pumps are gonna run twenty-four hours a day. And, and the other thing is that when this happened, when Walnut, when Walnut Booster Station was running, I can't, we can't get water to Triumph Industrial Park because it, this, the pump at Walnut Booster Station, it pumps four hundred and fifty gallon a minute, that's a lot of water. And it's taking water out of the line that supplies Triumph Industrial Park. So I got a call from, this is what, this is what started the whole thing. I got a call from the manager at the Triumph Industrial Park, says, he said, my water tower, I'm, my, for my fire protection is halfway empty. I was, and I said, I'm, I'm, and I'm not getting any water from the town. I said, what do you mean? I said, I'll meet you over there. So I went over, met him and sure enough, I, we, I looked at the meter ball, he, he had six gallons a minute coming from the town into his system and his water ta, his water tower he's got there, he's got the old Westside Water Tower there, was half full. I'm like, what's wrong here? So I went back and then I looked at the level of Blue Ball Tower, the Blue Ball Tower's only down seven feet and I couldn't get any water into his system. Well, the reason I couldn't get any water in his system was cause the pump at Walnut Booster Station is running continually and it's taking all the water out of the main before it can get to Triumph Industrial Park. So I explained this to, to everyone that was at the meeting, the mayor was there and I tried to explain that, but I'm not sure it got, I'm not sure it was clear on what that, uh, what they call that, the, uh, the, what do you call it, effect? I forget that word, that ripple effect they were talking about, but-
Well, how are we gonna get to the-
And what meeting was that? You just said the mayor was there and other people, what meeting was that and when did that occur?
Okay, I came to the town council, um, about two months ago and the mayor wasn't at that meeting and you were, you, uh, Commissioner Gimmins, you were in charge of that meeting that night. And I talked to you that night, I asked you, I, I said, I, I told you that we put Sengly Fire Company on, uh, Walnut Tower and I said that I wanted to put Gilpin Manor and Elton Middle School, okay? And then, and then you instructed the town to have a meeting? Well, that meeting never really occurred. Then the mayor, uh, but then, and then it done, the DPW, I guess, and the town set up a meeting with the fire department and the mayor called me, he said, I would like you to be at this meeting.
Right.
That was about a month ago. I think it was a month or so ago. I've lost track, cause it was before Christmas, it was like two weeks before Christmas, I was a little messed up at Christmas time. But anyway, it was about a week or so before Christmas and I came to the meeting, I didn't want to, I came anyway. So I came to this meeting and, and then, then I, everything I just told you, I pretty much said at that meeting and it just didn't fly too well. So anyway, they did, at the meeting, it was the, um, there was a KCI engineer was there and the town, uh, DPW is there and it was decided that they wanted to go ahead and go back to this six-inch valve that's up on two thirteen. And I don't think that's the way to go, but I'm only one person, you know, I-
Wait a minute, I wanna go back to the start, if you don't mind, to the start of this, with the fire company. You're saying they put in an eight-inch line.
Mm-hmm.
You put them on Walnut Hill and had seventy PSI.
Mm-hmm.
They came back off and went on to Blue Ball Tower and down to forty PSI.
Yes.
Now, just by keeping them on Walnut Hill Tower, they have enough pressure for what they need?
Yes.
And you're saying to put Gilpin Manor and the middle school on that same one and we'd be fine and that would be fixed?
Yes.
Why aren't we doing that?
Because it affects Elton Heights, there's a ripple effect, that's why.
I'm sorry?
There's a ripple effect, we looked into that with the engineer and it will affect other, you can't move zones, if you move zone, it makes a big effect. That's why we're attacking the P O R valve to prove that, to work in that way. We looked into that, but if you start moving zones, it has a ripple effect.
Okay, fine, you gave your answer, what was your answer, why are we not doing that?
My answer?
Yes.
Well, like I said, let me say this, you have five zones.
I mean, you're not refuting him, but I just want your, your opinion.
I am sort of refuting him, but-
Well, I'm, I'm just being kind.
Yeah. There, the, you know, the, the town, it's, it's perfectly normal to have different pressure zones. When you have a town this large and you have different elevations and you have to, it's normal to have different pressure zones. And when you, uh, have a pressure zone, it's very normal to have a valve there that separates this pressure zone from this pressure zone and it's, it's normal to have that. So there's a, a lot of times when they, when they put in this division valve, they just not necessarily really think that it's the best location. It may be, they may have chosen this valve because it may be the only valve. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be, that you couldn't extend this pressure zone into this zone and, and, and give this zone, put the, you know, it, because I can tell you a lot of reasons why it would be better to increase the pressure zone Walnut Tower because Walnut Tower is only serving a very small population of the town. Now, I can tell you, for instance, water quality, excuse me, water quality, uh, when you put these towers up, you know, they're not meant to hold water for five days because the longer the water's in the tower, it loses chlorine residual, it can, you could develop taste, odor problems.
Right.
You know? So here you've got a tower that holds a half a million gallon that's serving like, I don't know, twenty-five thousand, I mean, I mean, three or four thousand people and it's, it's in there for a long time and then you've got Blue Ball Tower that's turning over continually because it's supplying seventy percent of the town.
Uh, Ken, let me, let me ask you a quick question. I know, uh, sometime we were talking about the actual location of the valves and how you found some that had been cut off, some were in backwards or turned up. Have we located all the valves yet? And are we sure that the valves are working in the way they should be?
I, I don't know, I don't know if we have. I would say there's probably valves out there that are, that are closed, that should be open, that we don't know that are, I'm sure there's valves out there that we, we don't know. We wrote, I can't, I don't think we do know. But see, there's, you know, what, what I'm saying to you is that the, by going to this six-inch valve up on two thirteen, there's gonna be ripple effects with that. And one of the ripple effects is that you're gonna end up pumping water in a circle again and you're gonna, it's gonna cost you a lot of money to do that because instead of that pump at Walnut Booster Station running four hours, it's probably gonna run, I would say it's gonna run, it could run twenty-four hours. Because as soon as the water plant shuts down, that valve's gonna open up and it's gonna start supplying water all the way down to Buttonwood, all the way down to Route Forty. So you're gonna be supplying, you're gonna be paying for this pump to run twenty-four hours a day and it's not gonna give you what you need. And then the other problem is, I, I think we're gonna go have problems with Triumph Industrial Park supplying them with water again.
Well, my, my, my personal thinking here is, I probably wouldn't know if I had ninety PSI's or seventy PSI's in my house unless it was like down to a, nothing. The importance of the fire company to have the water and the schools for their sprinkler system in case God forbid something happened, to me is important. Um, so I don't know, I don't know, I think the Walnut Hill Tower, I, I'm, I'm sure there's more to it, but I really think that should be supplying that area.
Oh, Mary Jo, I gotta agree with you, I mean, that's, that's kinda like a, you know, like a no-brainer, that's, that's probably our one important function as a local government is to make sure that's-
Absolutely.
Make sure that's-
Fire protection is number one.
Absolutely, so, I mean, we need to make sure that that's at the safest level possible and then develop a plan, we can't just kinda-
Well, personally, I think that we could've, I think we can still do, I think we can achieve what we want and, um, I'm not opposed to the, having a, putting in a pressure relief valve, basically what, on, on, on that, up there on, on two thirteen. I just think, I, I don't, I just think that's the wrong location, okay? Because what's gonna happen is, is like I say, it's gonna respond to, um, any pressure fluctuation. As soon as we shut the water plant off or shoot, as soon as the Walnut Hill Booster pumps come on, it, the pressure on this side's gonna go down and that valve's gonna open up and it's gonna supply water to the whole town.
Now, I can, I can understand what you're saying and, and I think, you know, most of us can. Is there any way, I know it's, it's a lot easier when, when something's visual, is there any way that you can kinda make a simple flow chart so that everyone understands very simply and concisely exactly what you mean?
Well, can I finish, uh, and I can tell you, uh, what I think would resolve it and I think you, you would understand exactly what I'm saying, is that on, right past Sengly Fire Company, uh, we had to close the valve there and create a division valve, okay? So what I think you ought to do, and this is what I was gonna suggest to the town, to provide Gilpin Manor and, uh, the middle school with fire protection from Walnut Tower, Walnut Hill Tower. And that is to, at that division valve past the firehouse, that's where you wanna put that pressure relief valve. Because if you put the, put it there, okay, and then you go and open up the fire hydrant at the middle school, Gilpin Manor, you can set that pressure relief valve with a thirty PSI differential. So as soon as you open up a fire hydrant to fight a fire at the middle school, that valve, pressure relief valve will open up and then take water from Walnut Tower and will supply a thousand gallon a minute to the middle school, okay? But typically, typically, with everyday operation, that valve will remain closed and the firehouse, Sengly Firehouse will be on Walnut Tower and then if there, you have a fire at the middle school, this valve would then open up, supply water from, uh, Walnut Hill Tower and you, you can, you can, in other words, so you can, so, in other words, so what I'm saying is that, uh, the middle school and Gilpin Manor will typically get their water out of Blue Ball Tower for, for, for running their operations. But in a fire, if there was a fire, then you'd have this eight-inch water line coming from Walnut Tower that would open up and you'd have, you know, fifteen hundred gallon a minute to fight this fire at the middle school. And then the firehouse would have a thousand gallons all the time.
We, we could probably talk about that all night, but listen, let me just, this, let's, let's know what I feel about this. Now, uh, he already left, but I wanted to say this while he was here, but we rely on you guys to run the water plant for us. Your suggestions should be taken highly as far as whatever department has their ideas. What, what, what we need to do is have another meeting with your ideas and bring it to the table because nothing's done anyway. Nothing's been accomplished, right?
That's right.
Now, from what I'm hearing and if the ripple effect, that should be an equation that we should try to, uh, accomplish to try to figure out what it, what's going wrong. Now, this might be a bad analogy, but what you're talking about, the valve, the valves that you keep talking about opening and closing, it's almost like a toilet floater. When the water gets so lower, the water kicks on and, and, uh, the level comes up on, in, in a toilet. I'm just using that because I worked at DuPont, I remember opening valves, closing, letting water flow. And normally on that type of, uh, uh, system, like your water, letting the flow of water go one way or another, there's a, a device, a regulator that regulates a level of water. Once it gets so low, there's a floating device that brings it and shuts it off because you have so much going this way, but you don't let it go that far because of, of, of a level device dictating it's under forty or it's under fifty. You understand what I'm saying? So when, uh, Mr. Hick talked about valves being open and closed, I would think that that's where your ripple effect is coming because something is stopping the water from coming once water goes down. Something is letting it run completely out and then you've got maybe an air pocket causing that rip, ripple effect. That's my analogy behind that and I'm not an engineer to, to say that. But what we need to do is come together in a meeting, figure out, bring your, your ideas to the table and I don't think anyone should just let your ideas just go by and say, oh, we're not gonna do that, we'll go this. We rely on you to run the water system and that's where I would, uh, hold, hang my hat at.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you, I mean, there's, there's no reason why they can't have a meeting of the minds, your department work with Dan and they get a good plan together.
Because you can't just let it sit.
Yeah, because, uh, they're on me, you know, because I'm there and they can't keep asking me questions about why, like the other night they said they took the hose, turned it on and it, if I wouldn't go reach from here to that table.
Oh.
They can't have that.
I know it's bad.
The washed down apparatus and to fill those, uh, engines.
How soon do you need?
We need to get it fixed.
Well, here's the thing, the town, I believe the town is getting ready to, or is purchasing a new, um, pressure sustaining valve. Because the one that's up there on two thirteen right now, it's not, it isn't any good. It doesn't, it doesn't work, even if you wanted to use it, you couldn't use it. So, you know, if the town's gonna go ahead and purchases this, this pressure sustaining valve, it would be very simple, that I, this is what I think the town should do and I think the town should look at this, is to not put it there on two thirteen, but to put it on, to place it right below, right past the firehouse, on that eight-inch line, on, on Elton North Road and, and set the pressure differential for it to open in, in case, you know, for, for fire protection for the middle school and not, uh, uh, try to, uh, solve the problem at the firehouse every time you open up a, that's not gonna work, so.
Then you knew we need to get, like they said, we need to get the meeting, get the things together.
I think you should all talk about it.
We get this thing and we-
No, 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 we don't have the opportunity to talk about it, that's why we're here now. That's why you got Norris and you got Dan. You all need to talk about it and if you need to include us, we will be glad to do so. I know you, 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 you're hesitating, but that's your job. That's your expertise and you're the person that we find, uh, should be at highest end when we ask a question and get an answer.
You're an expert, so, you know, we need, we need action on this.
Have we ordered that thing yet or the pump or, do you know?
The valve.
It is ordered?
It's been paid for.
They had grounded the vault, um, yesterday or day before, I think, had it grounded, the people's waterproof soul, the, uh, the other valve, uh, was underwater and corroded, so got a new valve, it's supposed to be in, I think, four weeks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it's suggesting-
Well, it takes a long time to get-
So you're replacing a valve that's there, but it's not saying another valve-
Pressure sustaining valve is what we're replacing.
Where's the cost of these valves?
This isn't a valve you turn like that, it's a pressure sustaining valve that works on the pressure and how it gets set to that, which usually-
And Ken, what you're suggesting is that be relocated?
Yes.
Relocated.
Yeah, there's gotta be a meeting.
Yeah.
Very soon.
Set it down, figure out where we're gonna put it, if we do it.
And about the cleaning of those, those lines.
Right.
Cause you mentioned that several months ago.
That's a big one, there.
Get us, get us some prices or somebody so we can-
Cleaning the lines and Ken is right, that's a big, that's a big deal because you can't use the lines when you're cleaning them. You have to set up alternative ways to get people water.
It's gotta be a plan, it's gotta be a plan.
And I can tell you, you have to run lines above, all over the place. Uh, we did that, uh, we hid some lines over in Delman, where I made a, run all these, uh, hoses above and down also of the services, to the pyramids. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Something to plan for, it takes a long time. He's right, there's not a lot of connections between Dalal Rabbit and pulling up two eighty-one, but, and there's, I, I don't have the, uh, data.
All right, go ahead.
With Woods Alley, but we've already done all that check.
All right. All right, then, let's get the heads together. All right, then, let's get the heads together and, and see what come up with, notice now what's going on.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
So, so who's doing what? Um, who's organ, uh, organizing the meeting? And who's, who, uh, where do we have a, I mean, I'm not trying to throw negatives here, I just wanna find out.
And, uh, Ryan Flickinger set up the meeting with, uh, Ken. If they wanna, if he wants to, if he's suggesting moving the PRD, that, that's a big deal to, uh, go through an engineering, uh, plan, submit it to S H A and all those. I mean, it'll take a number of months to do that, but, uh, Ryan would, uh, take it and do a model. Let's call it a hydraulic model. In other words, every, everything you do, you do a model, or an engineer prepares a model, and that way, when you put a valve somewhere, you can see what the results are, uh, by, uh, a computerized generation, rather than going out there and taking a measurement.
Okay, I hear that.
You have a model in place.
I hear that, and, and just like I echo with Commissioner Givens, cause I know for sure that a lot of suggesting that, kinda, Ken puts out there, no disrespect for this statement, but it just gets wiped away. He, he, I know he feels like I can't say this, cause I'm organized film. I would like to have his input involved in this, instead of just making, well, I'm just saying. And well, and in this meeting for the board, I'd like to have some kind of feedback, so we'll know what the heck's going on here, because, I mean, that, I'm not trying to say that, I didn't know nothing about all this.
Why don't, why don't you let us know when the meeting is, and then perhaps a representative from the board can be at that meeting?
You, you will. You'll have to be back from, I'll have, uh, KCI come in and give a result of a model, uh, and explain it to the board. Do you want a flow diagram? They'll bring a flow diagram in and show you.
Do, do we, again, do we need KCI for what you're saying?
Good question.
I'm just asking, cause every time I hear, KCI has to tell you what you're already knowing, and then.
And Dan is.
And it's a cost factor.
Civil engineer.
I gotta tell you that, that meeting that I sat down with the mayor and KCI, I thought that, uh, before the meeting even started, uh, I'm gonna tell you that what I felt, I thought KCI already came in, already with the.
With a plan.
Made up.
Yeah, yeah.
That it was gonna be a certain way, and, and that was it, and that they weren't gonna look at any other alternative, uh, and, uh, I just, I let that mean, I was flabbergasted.
And that's my point, I didn't ask him that. And that's my point, that's what I felt from his last couple times he talked about this. So, that's my point.
I can, uh, bring in a different engineer. Bring him up front. And, uh, do you wanna use a different engineer?
But no, I think what, uh, they were saying, do we need an engineer? Cause Dan, it was, is a civil engineer, correct?
He's a civil engineer, but he, he can't, you can't run a model, or he doesn't have any capacity or resources to do what they have.
But I think on this discussion, on what we're discussing, Ken was just explaining it to us. You know a lot about it. Um, Dan knows, I mean.
Well, Dan took off.
I know.
You should've said something, he was here.
We couldn't, because he.
But I mean, to discuss this, to discuss this, though, is an engineer, do we have to hire the engineer to come in?
And not just engineers for everything we do.
But I, but no, I don't. Are we required, are we, are, are we required to have an engineer?
By the law.
Sign all.
Absolutely done.
That engineer, just do it to protect yourself. You know, that you qualified, certified, professional people.
Understand.
Something does burn down.
But Louis, this is a discussion at this meeting, and say they decide to move the, the pump, or whatever happens, then go to the engineer and say, okay, is this feasible? Or do they have to be hired to be in this meeting to make a decision? I don't believe they do.
All I have to do is send an email to, uh, Ryan Flickinger and tell him to put a, a pressure sustaining valve at a, a location that, that Ken recommends, and we'll see what happens.
There you go.
We'll see what the result, they'll do a model.
Right, oh, all right, well, that's good.
And then, you know, you know, pay for it.
Yeah, that's better than a new one.
You have to come, you know, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, but I understand what he's saying, but now, when you send this letter to him, is he going to first assume, well, I'm gonna get KCI involved? I think our intent is, I, I think our intent is that we need to find out the situation before KCI, anybody else comes in.
Exactly, exactly.
So he said he had put a regulator there.
Ken already made a recommendation to put a pressure sustaining valve down Elton Road to put the firehouse and those things, then those facilities nearby in the Walnut Hill, uh, uh, pressure zone. So what we need to do is put it in there, in, in a model, and see what happens, was, was our expectation, to pressure base on that.
But, but Louis, you then had Dan speak up very briefly when he said the, that bit about what would happen to Elton Heights, or whatever. So I think that needs to be discussed before you say, put the valve there and see what happens. It's not that.
When I say put the valve there, they put it in a model. They don't physically do it. It's just a computerized generation.
But I think, but what I'm saying is, the discussion needs to take place before the, the engineer.
Who do you, who would we discuss it?
Well, I think Ken and, and Dan, and you, and need to get together, and whatever this ripple effect is, figure out, okay, we need, what's important here is to get these public places, the water pressure that they need. And then, then see what's happening in the homes, and what we need to get it to go to the homes. And that doesn't take an engineer to figure out, I don't think. That would come in afterwards.
Right, I mean.
Right, this is what I'm saying.
It would be, it would be, in, in my eyes, you know, in like layman's terms, if you could do that, and I'm sure the model would show, it would be like a simple flow chart, right? And, and, and you can kinda look at that and say, oh, we got this pressure in this side of town, and in this zone, and so forth, and, and a valve could be open here, and closed here, and.
Well, that's why we, I wanted to get the, the pressure data with these recorders, so we could actually, then, then it's a fact, then. I can say, okay, well, you know, the, the lots of, they've got less than thirty PSI.
Yeah, okay.
One More Road has ninety PSI, the Firehouse has forty PSI, and I, because this is, you can argue with this data, this data is, is.
Right, right.
So Ken, Ken and Dan should meet, discuss these things, and then apply it to a model, maybe once or twice.
Already got that.
And, and he got a negative answer from his.
Fifteen times, when you said you want Dan and Ken and I to meet, it's done.
Okay, well, let's move on.
And I'm, I'm gonna tell you, dude, it's a much more complicated thing than just opening a couple of valves and see what happens. I mean, you know, it's.
All right, we'll go that direction, and let's see what happens, get back with us, let us know.
Dan's gonna do this.
Okay. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, do you have anything, Louis?
Yeah.
I don't have anything else, business. Mary Jo, you have anything?
No, I do not.
Or anything?
Uh, where are we at with the steps on Norfolk Main, on High Street? For the develop, I mean, for the, uh, contract and work, where are we?
We're just, we're.
The faves?
We can't, all the plans make asphalt or closed, so we can't do it till probably April. They hit the mill, they're in the mill, and not paid.
I know, I'm a blacked out, I just wanna know where we're at. Thank you.
No, sir. I just had a couple of things, a couple of appointments, um, three appointments to the planning commission. One, uh, was Fred Thomas, and the other one was Ozma. If I can get a motion to accept those.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. And then, I guess you've got one, uh, Louis, about this gentleman, we, I still have a lot of emails going around. What our decision was, and how we're gonna be able to help this gentleman with the, that one's water?
I don't know how we're gonna help him yet.
Yeah.
I, uh, started with the county, and the county gave me a list of about ten things we have to do, to do that. Because it's a county where we need a public works agreement with the county. We have to submit an engineering plan to the county for approval, with all the notes and, and, uh, the conditions that require, that they require, because the county will regulate us doing it. Didn't wanna spend five thousand dollars, uh, just, just to, you know, to do this for one person. It's up to the board, but I'm not prepared to give you a recommendation on that yet, because I have to have all that information.
Okay. But can we do something like that, if it was feasible, Norman, going out of town, or he's, and he doesn't wanna stay, and he doesn't wanna be annexed?
Doesn't wanna be annexed, and, uh, the county has to make a decision now, is it gonna supply, uh, water to out-of-town residents? If there's a, uh, provision in the code, that he has to go into an agreement with us to pay in lieu of taxes. There's a, there's a condition into that.
All right.
We'll be setting a precedence with this?
Well, case, I mean, Artisan has already waived any objections to supplying water to that one property. Cause it's in their franchise territory.
Yes.
So we normally wouldn't supply water into their area anyway.
All right. You got anything, Mary Jo?
No, I do not.
I don't know. Joel?
Louis, the, uh, the, 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 how are ponds, is that normally stocked with fish occasionally each year?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
We can, we're stocked, and it will stock it now, but it'll stock in the spring.
And the trees outside, what's gonna happen to them, and when you had talked about the removal or something?
I think spring, you're gonna turn them back or take them out. We need to take them out in March.
Okay, Dan is gone, I was gonna compliment him on the fact that there were some brushes and, and branches, which I rode around for the town, and I saw that they have been removed. I know that he gave us a deadline date, but, but, uh, his people moved them. Joe, Simmons is getting ready to have this open house, and they're gonna have a parade. Do you know anything about it? We received letters. Joe, you know anything about it?
Not parade, no, I guess not.
I, I had a phone call several months ago.
Nobody got a letter?
With the Memorial Day Parade, but then chose to do their own.
Simmons has an open house up.
All that, the same, yeah, that's one, yeah, what, what I do with it. I did get a letter, but it said April twenty-seventh.
I'm just asking.
They're gonna have a parade, but they've been dealing, I had nothing to do with that.
Okay. I thought you knew.
No, I didn't have anything to do with it.
Name is Anne.
No, they were going to do it with Memorial Day, um, but I heard all the fire companies from the, um, county were going to be in it. I don't know what they really wanted in the letter.
Well, I just haven't seen a letter where, like, first come, first served, when you line up back through on Delaware Avenue, so I was just wondering what was gonna be in the parade.
They did go for their state permits, I know that, cause I directed them to Lieutenant Waldrich. Um, and I believe, I know. Yeah, because I know, I received all mine for the year today, actually.
Are the guys you say chief are not, they got their permits or anything, or applied, or?
Yeah.
It's all done?
Yeah.
Larry's taking care of it.
He took care of it.
Just like he would any other.
Yeah.
That's why I told him to contact him, cause I didn't have anything to do with it.
We already had it lined up with them, and what they're gonna be doing.
And what about, Mary Jo, you might know the Warburton property. Was there anything done as far as you're all going out there to observe it?
Just, uh, when the mayor and I were there.
Oh, you did go?
Walked it out, and Gene and Louis, um, beautiful property, beautiful property.
Well, he did call me this evening, since you brought up, um, and I thought I totally get around with him, get, get back to Harley. When anybody could possibly go out there again, he did get the lock fixed. We didn't go through the house.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah, the lock was stuck.
We just walked around the property, and of course.
I've been in the house before when Mrs. Burton, Warburton was alive.
She's lived in there.
I told him I'd get back with him and find out, we sent out something, and he would be more than willing to take us.
It does pack up right to our parks.
Yeah, right down the hill. So, anybody wants to get time together, we get the time, I can call him, or we can have someone call him and tell him to set another date for us. He got the lock.
I'll have to try that again, just trying to make it late, late in the afternoon for him. I appreciate it.
That's him, there.
Hearing nothing else, then I need a good motion to have a closed meeting pursuant to State Government Article ten dash five oh eight A nine to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to negotiations.
So move.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor? Motion carried, we will not be reconvening.